Good evening, Vicksburg, and welcome to tonight's Village Regular Session Council in-person meeting. It is Monday, May 2, 2022. I ask you all to stand up. We'll say Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I must say, that is the best rendition we have ever done here. Thank you, ladies. We'll take a moment of silence before we begin. Mr. Mallory, if I ask if you do roll call, please?
I'm going to ask Christian Wines to do the roll call tonight.
That would be even better.
Trustee Merrill?
Here.
Trustee Reaster?
Here.
Trustee Olson?
Here.
Trustee Keller?
Here.
Trustee Holmes?
Here.
Trustee Wagner?
Here.
President Frisby?
Here. Thank you, Christian. Well, we have an agenda in front of us this evening. Mr. Mallory, were there any changes or additions?
No, sir, not from staff.
Anything from the council trustees?
None.
Well, then, I would entertain a motion to approve as presented.
President Frisby, I make that motion?
Support.
Motion by Trustee Wagner, support by Trustee Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have some scheduled appearances tonight. It's going to be recognizing Mr. Bobby Durkey and Denise Harrell, as well as introducing a new employee to the village. So I'll let Jim lead off with this.
Thank you, President Frisby. Denise Harrell began her employment with the village of Vicksburg, May 28, 2018. Denise was the first line to contact when people called or visited Village Hall. She served as a smiling face, always with a warm greeting, a sounding board, an informational specialist, and she helped people sort out issues and find help when needed. Denise also served as a liaison between departments, between the public and those departments. Beyond all those things she handled, billings, payments, our village newsletter, the sorting of volumes of mails that arrived daily into Village Hall, and dealt with all the IT needs of a fast-growing village. Denise knows about everyone in this town and truly liked living in and serving this community. She leaves with a tremendous amount of knowledge about how things work, and that knowledge will take time to replace. In the meantime, we are grateful that she still picks up the phone when we call to ask her where this is or that may be found, and mostly to hear the voice we are all missing greatly at Vicksburg Village Hall. Denise, you want to come on up here? We wish you all the very best in your retirement. We ask that you drop by on occasion, say hi to all the people who value your friendship. And on a personal note, I cannot ever appropriately express the gratitude of all the things that were rushed, needed from you to get me out of a jam, which you accomplished every single time. So on behalf of the village council, I'll give you some flowers, and on behalf of staff, a card with some words. We'll ask Denise if you're okay with it, Mr. President Frisby. She'll be able to say a few words, and if the council wishes to express anything, and then...
Thank you so much for the acknowledgement and the flowers. That's very nice. I will miss seeing everybody and staying in touch, but I think I'm going to enjoy retirement as soon as it gets warm enough to golf. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
Any trustees who'd like to say anything?
I just want to express my gratitude. You were the front line for the village, and at times it was, could be pretty heated. And, you know, with the changing and some of the cost structuring and the water and sewer, and you handled it like a trooper. And I know people would go in quite upset and come out feeling at least they were listened to with a, you know, a kind face and an acknowledgement. And so I really appreciate all you've done there. Anyone else would like to comment? Thank you, Denise.
Denise, just wanted to say thank you for your service. I appreciate when I came into Village Hall for anything. You were always extremely helpful, especially getting my mail, so.
Denise, I'd like to say thank you. I'm going to miss you. You caught my little screw-ups and let me know about it without yelling at me, so I appreciate that. But, yeah, we're all going to miss you. Thank you.
There were one last official business. Delivered the mail to me. I'm sorry I left it stacked up like that.
I would like to say that I'm going to miss Denise in the Village, in the Village Hall, because I think she did a fantastic job. She's also a very close friend of mine, and so I will be seeing her a lot anyway. So, thank you so much for your service.
I think Gail and Denise waited about 10 days and then came in. Denise would just beam in ear to ear as she entered Village Hall, listening to a customer out front or whatever, enjoying retirement, so.
Yep.
Mr. Bobby Durkey, want to come on up?
Sure.
As some in the room know, Bobby and I go back to time in the city of Kalamazoo. And in my position, prior to leaving, I'd see inquisitive emails coming from this person named Durkey. Some of our involvement had to do with, with the site plans and oversight, reference fire, martial issues, and that type of thing. And I'd get CC'd, not knowing that Bobby lived in the village of Vicksburg and that our paths would cross within a very short time. And on my first meeting with the Planning Commission as village council, in which we had action items, it was, it was quite evident to know who was profound in speaking on a topic and a subject matter expert. And after the meeting, he might not remember, but I, I asked him for his name again. And hearing the name, I, we drew a connection to the city of Kalamazoo and had a conversation about that and finding out that he lived in the village of Vicksburg. And that would have been probably in October of 2016, if memory serves me correct. Took about 12 months, but received council support on October 2 of 2017 to put Bobby Durkey on the team. It was a, some people outside of the village of Vicksburg have asked me, you know, what was key back to those early days. And, and there's multiple factors, I think, in reflection that, that assisted me. Certainly, within the top 10 and probably top 5, was getting the city of Kalamazoo to sign off on something that is not normally done, and the support of the council to hire Bobby with his expertise in zoning and assistance and economic development. So on a personal note, thank you very much, excuse me, pass along the thanks to some of the directors and deputy city managers, you know who, at the city of Kalamazoo. Bobby Durkey was appointed to the Vicksburg Planning Commission in April of 2013, was hired by the village as stated October 2 of 2017. He already had a full-time job. The village became his third. First job was being a husband and father of four young ladies, all over here today. That's Claire Durkey, Allison Durkey, Nicole Durkey, and Lauren Durkey. Bobby also had the full-time job with the city of Kalamazoo, and then with the village of Vicksburg. He took up all the rest of the minutes left in his day, which took up all the minutes left in his day. Bobby speaks a language unlike any other in the topics of zoning, setbacks, ordinances, residential versus mixed use versus commercial. He knows his stuff. He helped this village go through all our regulations and ordinance, fix what needed updating and making sense of what was left. He helped us combine, complete, rethink, and translate a lot of critical information and to make it available through our website for all citizens to digest. The work he did for the village required a lot of time and a lot of research. Bobby always had time and always found answers. The work he did has made the village stronger and more ready to deal with the growth that continues to come our way. Bobby, we're grateful for all the things you have done for us. We will miss your friendship and your expertise. We really hope you don't get bored with only one full-time job, a wife, and four kids, but if you do, you certainly know where to find us, and you are welcome on this team anytime. From everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
This is from the village council. This is from the village staff. So if you wish to say a few words?
Sure.
I didn't prepare anything or think of anything, but obviously, once Denise spoke, I knew there may be something. I think as evident, I, I really always appreciated the work. And I shared with Jim earlier how I ended up on the Planning Commission. It started with a phone call from commissioners and me saying I've always thought it'd be neat to be on a planning commission to getting a letter in the mail three weeks later. So thank you to the council for, for the opportunity that led to where we are nine years later. But I really enjoyed the work. It, it wasn't an easy decision. I think, as Jim has shared, I, you know, was hemming and hawing it for a little bit, but I think, you know, it never did impact my work in the city, but I, between us getting busier there and the growth coming here, it was inevitable. And these four girls, growing up, each of them starting to enter sports or activities, and then even my wife, who was a stay-at-home wife for a number of years, works now, including part-time at the school district. So to make sure that that balance was there, something had to give. So that was my time with the village. But I really appreciated it. I'm, I'm sure I won't be far. I live in the village. We're not going anywhere. And maybe from time to time, I'll keep you guys on task if I see something that looks a little out of order, so. But I don't have much else to say. I thank you to the citizens of the village. I realize sometimes these codes and rules can be frustrating, but you got a good team on the Planning Commission and the council leading them. And if there's ever a problem, I know that they can speak up and make a change. Thanks again.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't mean to step on Gail earlier, so I'll go ahead and just speak now. Bobby, I can't express what you've done for this community. You know, myself and Carl sat on the Planning Commission. You were there, and it was like, finally, somebody that speaks that language. It's all, you know, gobbledygook when you're going through all, as Jim said earlier, you know, just the ordinances and the building codes and the zoning codes. And we're all volunteer laymen. It was just so far out of our league. And to hear you speak with the knowledge, and, and when Jim, not to take away from anybody else, I think the single most best thing, is that right, English, that he brought to the table was asking you to, to join us as a director. It took a burden off this, this council that was just so well-needed. And the codification, the time you put into that, unbelievable. So, thank you very much, Bob. Thank you.
Bobby, I'd like to say, myself, as Tim said, being on the Planning Commission with you was, was enlightening. I can remember getting tasks to take home and have to go through the ordinances and, and that. And you made it make sense as we were going through it. The one thing I do remember most was when you became the director, I took over as, as chairman of the Planning Commission, and that was right about the time we were dealing with the PUD for the mill. And you were invaluable to me as the chairman to kind of help guide me, because we had some pretty big meetings at that time. And for a planning commission, that's not normal to have, you know, to be in the high school auditorium with a lot of people there. So I greatly appreciate everything you did for me, not only as the director, but also personally. So thank you, and I appreciate everything you did.
Bobby, I'm looking forward to crossing paths in the neighborhood and you adding to my to-do list, as you've already mentioned. So regardless of the hat I'm wearing, I've always valued your input and looking forward to getting more from you, just in a less official capacity.
Anyone else? I would just like to say, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Ladies, your dad's pretty cool. Or I think, you know, now that I have grandkids, I think the word chill is pretty chill. All right, so be proud of them. We're certainly proud of them. Got a couple more introductions. And first, I'll, I'm very thankful for this council to recognize the need, the workload, the staffing. We did hold interviews with multiple people. Trustee Reaster sat on those interviews with, with an internal team. We did extend offers for customer service rep positions. Thankfully, they both, both accepted, and we're really looking forward to the future. And we're doing, going to do it a little bit different. I feel more appropriate if, first, I ask Lori Weisner to come on up. And I've asked them to say a little bit about their history and the whole village or the area, the school system, their desire to be a part of the team and what's going on in Vicksburg. Our whole internal team talked after. It was refreshing and validating to have people talk about the village and what's happening. So with that, Lori, we'll give you the microphone.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lori Weisner. I'm so excited and thankful to join the staff of the Vicksburg Village, so I appreciate the opportunity. I don't live in the village. I live out by Toby Elementary. My children went to Toby, and now I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. I come from a variety of different backgrounds, human resource management, accounting, and whatnot. So I look forward to bringing those skills to the table as well. Vicksburg, amazing. I've got friends that just moved into the Vicksburg Village a couple of years ago, and she was welcomed. She lives on Kalamazoo Avenue with the Christmas parade. And she's like, I couldn't believe it. What a great welcome. But Vicksburg rocks. So I'm excited to see all the planning that's going on downtown and being a part of it. I'm really looking forward to that. One of my good friends is one of the architects that helped with the Mackenzie's Bakery. So very exciting things. And I'm a Schoolcraft Girl, but been with Vicksburg 19 years now, married a Vicksburg guy, and I'm just really thrilled to, to be a part of the team. So thank you so much for having me. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next off, I will say that, that Schoolcraft Girl thing, I think, came up in the interview. I'm still looking forward to the future.
I just put a question.
And it's my understanding, both kids, that's Vicksburg Middle School and High School.
That's correct.
Best school system ever.
That's right.
All right.
I'm a bulldog for her now.
There we go. There we go. The, next up, Donna Dunsmore. And interesting story, I was, had, and tomorrow night will be one with Trustee Olson's neighborhood at Centennial. Zoom, zoom, meaning getting citizens' inputs on budgetary-type stuff, or what, what priorities, needs, wants, and wishes from a citizen perspective. And I mentioned in that meeting that we were looking at possibly expanding the staff and, and due to the workload in the future as we saw it in the village of Vicksburg. And right after that, it might have been the next day or certainly within a week, I got an email, and you've all been around me. I get talking, and I, the email reminded me of some things I said during the meeting. And Donna was extremely patient, because it took probably a week for me to respond to her initial email, saying, I did get approval, maybe two weeks, I did get approval to have the interviews. And then as we were juggling internal schedules, it was another four weeks till we set up the interviews. And I was worried that I had like maybe waited too long, but she responded to that email and things worked out really well. So Donna, if you want to take a couple minutes?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Donna Dunsmore, and I recently retired from Consumers Energy after 32 years in varying roles and responsibilities. And my husband and I, Bill Lux, we spent the first 10 years of our married life over in Van Buren County, Paw Paw area. And then we decided that we'd like to see about condo life, because just thought it might be nice to downsize a little bit. And we ended up looking around in a lot of places and came out to Vicksburg. And aside from the golf course being there and everything, and really liking the area, we, coming into town was just, it was very impressive, because there's always people doing things in Vicksburg. There are so many small towns that you drive through that there aren't any storefronts filled, and there's no activity. And we're like, wow, this is a really nice place. So we decided to build a condo at Bridgeview, and we've been here two and a half years. And I'm really looking forward to this opportunity to work with the village and get to know more people. It's just, today was my first day at work, and it was really enjoyable. And I think Christian's going to make a great boss, so. Just really looking forward to it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for clarifying, South Haven. I was worried you were going to say you were a Three Rivers girl, so.
That wouldn't have been bad.
Well, thank you both, and welcome. We look forward to the growth that this village, you spoke to it, the growth this village is seeing. And as you see why we, we need to have a good group of staff available to the residents here. So, thank you.
If I can, President Frisby, I did promise, and hopefully I didn't step out of my lane, that knowing the girls probably had homework and everything, employees have responsibilities in the morning, I, I said, after we do the introduction, it'd be okay with all of us if they had home.
Absolutely.
They certainly can stay for the three or four hours we have in front of us.
Hey, you promised.
More importantly, they're hungry. They promised not food.
Oh, where are you going to go?
Main Street Pub.
Okay.
Patronizing to the people that are beautiful downtown.
There you go.
There you go.
Thanks again, everyone.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Ah, thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Be careful with that, please.
I know, I can't, no. I'm, I'm in charge. I think a lot of options are difficult. Yeah, thank you.
Don't be tardy for that. All right, so we still have a meeting in order, y'all. Jim, was there any public officials on the call?
No, no public officials scheduled or on the call tonight, sir. And no one, from a citizen perspective, on the Zoom call to speak, so it would only be people in the audience for agenda items only.
Yeah, this is a time, if there's any citizens' comments, for agenda items only. You'll have an opportunity later for non-agenda items, so hearing none. We'll move on to approval of the general consent agenda. We have minutes from the last council meeting, April 25th, warrant reports in a total of $30,455.56, and event rental request. Was there any corrections or changes to the, the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Wagner, I move to approve the general consent agenda as submit.
Trustee Holmes, a second.
Motion by Trustee Wagner, a second by Trustee Holmes. We'll take a roll call, please.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Reaster?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
And President Frisby?
Yes. Thank you, Christian. And we have some action items in front of us tonight. Mr. Mallory?
Yes, agenda item 10A. And to highlight, as we talk about roadwork, I know we brought four, some that were approved. And to highlight, as we talk about roadwork, I know we brought forth some that were approved last week. That those last week are for the 22-23 fiscal year. This agenda item 10A is yet in this fiscal year, as we started to evaluate what could as well be improved downtown. So agenda item 10AI, as in Ida, is Mill Street and Prairie Street. So the project only covered half of Mill Street. So what this will do is mill off the other half that goes into the Prairie Street intersection and then Prairie Street down to the gazebo.
Good. Good, good, good.
And that's two inches of new asphalt after it's milled off. The total for that's $36,250. The other section is 22nd Street. It's about midway down towards the Centennial neighborhood. There's, when I say a short couple hundred yard section of the old asphalt that was not improved in the construction project. And when we had the Boulevard section or V Avenue section, we didn't delineate in that contract this small section above it. So, and we're just, so that is $58,642. Again, major street funds, there is balance in the major street funds to $94,892. There's, there's plenty of a balance in that.
Jim, I have one question about the Mill Street Prairie Street.
Yes, ma'am.
When you do that portion, are you, that will include that portion that they had to rip up and then they just?
Yes, yes, right at the intersection, kind of by Speedway to the west. Yes, it will.
So that's gonna take care of that. Thank you.
Yeah, that was correct and a pipe issue underground is why they corrected that.
Yeah, thank you.
Jim, I have a question.
Yes.
When you do Prairie Street, is that gonna be all closed down or one lane at a time?
One, one lane at a time, much like Prairie was out by Lija Industrial Park.
Yeah.
So they'll, it comes with traffic, flag people.
Okay.
And they'll do, they'll mill it off all at once, then they come back three days later. They'll pave Mill Street and Prairie Street, keeping one lane open.
Right. Well, with that heavy traffic right there, that was my concern, so thank you.
Should, and should be done by the end of the first week of June. I anticipate it'll be done by May 27.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallory?
And then staff's just recommending the motion and support to approve the village manager into entering the contract with Reeve Riley.
What is the council's wishes?
Trustee Wagner, I make a motion to support and approve the village manager into entering a contract with Reeve Riley. Not to exceed, oh, we don't have a not to exceed for it, the total cost of both proposals for the street rework.
Trustee Olson, my second.
Yes, $94,892.
Motion has been made to enter into the agreement by trustee Wagner and seconded by trustee Olson. We'll do a roll call, please. Christian?
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
President Frisbee?
Yes.
Motion carries. And you have an update on Clark Park Parking Lot at Washington Street.
Correct. We solicited competitive bids looking at the parking lot to Clark Park that comes off Washington Street. It's, I reckon this to note is a 22-23 fiscal year item, so it would be done after July 1st. And it's to give authorization to enter a contract with Michigan Paving for $11,500, which will put a two inch top base on the existing asphalt that's there with striping.
You have any questions of staff?
Jim, I know that we've talked about potentially redoing Clark Park in the 23-24, I think, fiscal year.
No, and right now as it sits in the CIP plan, that would be the, would be the following fiscal year and possibly two fiscal, so I'm trying to get my number straight, 24-25, I think is more realistic.
Okay.
But that's into the park. We would have the parking lot come off there due to some of the areas around Washington and the dam and that. That's, would be harder to move infrastructure that's under it.
Yeah, I was just thinking in regards to that, if this was, I mean, I'm sure it's an appropriate improvement, just thinking of timing if we could, if there was a review we could do in there for the parking lot, if that might change with the Clark Park project.
Well, when we discussed it internally and why we're recommending it, we believe that the parking lot will deteriorate to a full reconstruction. And when we solicited the price and received it at $11,500, the economics of it, we felt it was even a good short-term investment. We envision, we, what would happen, we'd end up putting an RFP out for Clark Park redesign. And if anything, you know, I, it's kind of the trend is anti-asphalt and to leave green space and walkability and those type of things. So what we've talked with the configuration of Washington Street and what we already have solicited input from Eagle, they came down on site, that along the creek is, we could put a wide 10-foot path coming from Washington Street into downtown. Or what we're really trying to prepare for is the anticipation of the opening of the mill and driving people from the mill property in a very walkable four blocks. They could be in the heart of our downtown, bringing them across Washington Street through Oswalt Park walking. So I, I anticipate the parking lot staying the same size on the redesign, knowing full well that my lane of the highway is the money on that project, not a designer of parks. Because Washington Street's wide enough where we can add on-street parking if need be. Or configure it where you've seen in some towns where they put very close together like the things into the cement and delineate a travel lane by coloring the cement. We've talked about that to give people options to come down into the park as well as walk Washington Street into downtown. It's long-winded, but our goal is to get people to our downtown.
No, that answers my question perfectly. Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions for Mr. Mallory? Hearing none, he's requesting a motion of support and enter into an agreement for the paving of such. What's the council's desire?
Trustee Reister, I move that we approve for the village manager to enter into a contract with Michigan Paving for $11,500 to repave Clark Park Parking Lot at Washington Street.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Motion by trustee Reister, support by trustee Wagner. Mr. Weiser, do a roll call, please.
Trustee Keller?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
Yes.
Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Olson?
Yes.
Trustee Reister?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. And we have on the agenda Parks and Rec Committee?
Yeah, that was actually filled, Mr. Keller's efficient job last week filled that. So that's my error.
I had a little sidebar with him. I just asked if that wasn't the case. All right.
Christian confirmed. I said probably by the next meeting I'll have you even start working on the agendas. And I'm sure we'll have a request from Alex that Christian hits a mic.
Well, Mr. Mallory, it takes us to your update report.
Yes, a couple things. Speaking of Christian, we're in the process of getting him to the state clerks. Training, week-long conference in June. I think it's in Mount Pleasant? Just north of Mount Pleasant. They're in Traverse City. He's gonna, he's, you don't stop at the casino. We've talked about this. Yeah, but getting his training, I will say, I'd avoid it if I didn't feel it. It's just refreshing to have someone eager to learn and, and just doing a fantastic job. So publicly thank you. Really appreciate what you've done and everything. So some things I thought were gonna take months. All of a sudden it's like, what's next? I'm like, oh, I've got a few things. With that as well, I do, it didn't make the agenda because we got the news today, which was good news. Due to the growth of the village and we've shared the population growth over the last 10 years for sure, and specifically the last six years, we received notice from the state of Michigan in that evaluation. We'll be getting an additional 100, we won't be getting, we received today, $110,000 in additional state money due to our population growth. So it was a internally, I shared with two people as soon as they heard the news, talking about their wish items they want. I said that money's already claimed for.
Is it unrestricted?
Yes, it is unrestricted. It'll go into the general fund and hopefully to a savings account somewhere. The, but yeah, construction updates. Curbs been installed on Washington Street. Today we started pouring sidewalks down on Washington Street. Curbs on Mills have been completed. The road is pretty prepped, ready, ready to go. They'll start working on Michigan to, that's gonna be a complete reconstruction to get that prepped. Once all the roads are prepped, then they'll bring in the asphalt equipment and do the roads, roads at once. But bigger news than that is trees began to get planted. Trees began to get planted downtown. And there will be, when this is all done, more trees downtown than there were before. The trees are low root based trees, so shouldn't impact the sidewalks that much into the future. So we're looking forward to that. We do have two additional trees in the project that didn't have a location. So we tomorrow will finalize, but we'll probably place those trees if possible. We took out some old, I think they were cherry-type trees or something at the top of the hill, kind of between the Speedway and the steps leading down. So we're gonna probably repurpose those two trees on top of that hill and create a plant bed between the two trees. We took a look at the engineering sightlines today off the traffic stop on Michigan for those that would want to see eastbound traffic. And it's just come to me that those locations have already been staked. So here we go. So I said we're not taking the trees back. We're gonna, I know exactly where they need to go. It came up, if Julie remembers, in either one of the last two Parks and Rec meeting about getting something there. So this, it'll work well. But, and the plants are out by the end of business tomorrow, which could be 8:00 PM for that company. All of the plants, all the mulch is in the downtown. Trees should be planted. Weed barrier is around the tree. In the, I've asked the company that installed the plants to provide a three-year proposal for maintenance of the area as well as they installed the irrigation system. So to look at them turning it on and turning it off or winterizing it. And so we should see that come through as well. There are, I believe it's 40 some pots yet to be placed out. Some irrigation work has to be completed. Once those pots are placed out, we have people ready and we'll be planting. Not a florist either, but I think they're annuals that are planted every year.
Annuals.
So the annuals will go in the plants or the pots. And we should be in good shape come June 2nd. So I'll, I'll pause. Downtown striping should be in by May 23rd. We do, we do have temporary handicap signs that we received this weekend. I have them in my car and they will be out tomorrow. And they're the, if anyone saw like the Vicksburg hardware sign, they're just two of those. I've listened and I thought that the downtown would be striped, but due to the weather being under 55 degrees, it hasn't. So we put an emergency rush order and we've received the two signs. So we'll have one of those placed on Prairie Street and one of those placed on Main Street tomorrow morning. Randy's meeting yet.
I do have a comment. I got another call today from a person wanting to know why we didn't have any handicap spots. So I was able to tell this person, they'll be there tomorrow. They'll be there tomorrow.
And as soon as, there'll be more handicap parking downtown as soon as it's striped than there's been. And the other thing people need to appreciate is the Vicksburg sidewalks weren't ADA compliant. The, the parking spots to get more parking were reduced from 23 to 17 feet. So all of that's being corrected. We have, unfortunately, it's the reality, the weather in April was horrific to move forward. But it's all lined up to happen and I'm confident by Memorial Weekend, downtown will be street swept clean, new striping, and everything will be rocking and rolling. Any, any questions on the downtown project? Okay. The barn, the cement floor has been poured. We are putting an approach pad. The DPW will do some excavating to ensure the slopes are correct. We anticipate that the week of May 16th. The, excuse me, bay doors by May 20th and we're still anticipating a completion date of the barn, May 31st. Oswalt Park, hopefully people have noticed the sidewalks have been poured. Around where the fireplace will be is colored sidewalks to match the downtown. And then the main walking sidewalks are traditional. Also, what they're seeing constructed now is a trellis bar that'll have high back chair seating behind it that looks into the downtown. So that'll move forward. And, and yeah, again, a lot of positive comments. Had a call from another town today on it. Excuse me. And then it's set, formal invitations should go out on Wednesday for the grand reopening of the village of Vicksburg downtown and Oswalt Park. We've set for Thursday, June 2nd at 4:30 PM. VIP invites, like I say, will be probably sent by May 4th. We're gonna take care of May 18th tomorrow. But we're looking forward to that ribbon opening. Alex is working on different events where, where we'll be asking the council to approve closing Main Street. And it will be a, hopefully a good time for all to hang out on that Thursday night. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on, on any topic that the council might have tonight.
I think the overall response to the Oswalt Park has been phenomenally positive. And I've heard people say, I didn't know it was so big. It was looking very nice, Jim. Thank you.
Yeah, I've been getting comments on a daily basis, you know, being right across the parking lot. Everyone's just standing there in my lobby and they're saying, well, what's that project going on behind you? And I said, well, it's Oswalt Park. They said, it had a name? And I said, yeah, it's gonna have this big beautiful sign and everything, these said, it had a name? And I said, yeah, it's gonna have this big, beautiful sign and everything, these trellis bars, this fireplace. And everyone's really got a positive reaction to it. They're looking forward to seeing it. So, it's nice to hear all that positive feedback from folks, and it's looking great.
Any other questions for staff? Hearing none, we can move on to the committee reports. Was there a planning commission meeting?
President Frisbee, that'll be next week.
Next week. South County Fire?
I made my report last week. I forgot to mention, though, that, um, I had brought up in our previous meeting last month that, um, there was a potential issue with the monthly warning, the monthly testing of the, um, the alarm or the, or the siren. Um, that's been resolved. We thought they might have to buy a new apparatus for it. They do not. Um, they were able to resolve it with a, basically a software update. So, I neglected to report that last meeting. I apologize. So, I wanna make sure everybody's aware that, uh, it was a lot less than they thought it was gonna be. So...
I don't believe there was a sewer meeting, was there?
No, sir, it was canceled until...
October, yeah, that's right. Uh, tree committee, any updates on that?
No updates.
No updates? Parks and Rec? Ms. Merrill?
No updates.
Wow. Takes us right down, oh, we did citizens' comments. If there are any citizen who would like to, uh, address the council, this is your time to do it. If you would, please, uh, state your full name and home address.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Julie Jensen. My address is five-nine-four-seven Leon Drive, Scotts, Michigan, four-nine-zero-eight-eight. And I'd like to introduce myself today because I am running for judicial office. The Kalamazoo Ninth Judicial Circuit Court has two openings due to age requirements. Um, so there are two judges aging out, two positions opening. There are seven of us lined up to run for the primary August 2nd, and the general election following that will be narrowed down to four. And I just wanted to come and introduce myself and tell you a little bit about my qualifications, so that you, um, can have an idea of who I am and why you might want to vote for me. And I do see a lot of familiar faces and some new ones, too, so I'm happy to be amongst, uh, friends and people that I haven't seen for a while. So...
Julie, will you spell your last name?
I sure will. It's J-E-N-S-E-N.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And while we're on that, um, my website is JulieJensenfor, the numeral four, judge.com. And you can interact with me there or just review my qualifications. But I wanted to let you know that, um, for many of you, you probably already know that I was, I was born and raised in this area, and I raised two children who are now adults. And they went to Vicksburg School with many of your children, as we sit here today. And, um, I, I remain committed to this area. I live in Pavilion, and I have lived in the area for my entire life. Um, I'm married to my husband of thirty years. And I, um, I wanted to share some, uh, background information. I have been practicing law for as long as I've been married, so thirty years, since nineteen ninety-two. Um, I have, of all the seven candidates, the longest experience record that you'll find, and also one of the broadest. Um, I started my career at the Court of Appeals, and I did much of what circuit court judges do. I reviewed records and evidence, and I recommended dispositions for the judges and wrote their essentially, uh, recommended opinions. So, I'm familiar with what judges do in that respect. Um, then I spent ten years doing civil litigation with two Kalamazoo law firms in, um, insurance, defense, workers' comp, that sort of civil litigation-type matters. Then I moved on to public service in two thousand and three, where I started with the Michigan Attorney General's Office. And I was assigned to the Labor Division there, and I worked a lot doing unemployment work and, um, helping people and employers resolve their unemployment issues. As you know, that's been a source of hotspot lately. And I still get calls about that, and I left there in two thousand and thirteen. Still helping people with that, hopefully. Um, I moved to Treasury in two thousand and thirteen, and I am a tax policy attorney, so I try to help resolve, um, legal issues that arise with legislation that's been passed or is passing. Um, I also help taxpayers resolve disputes, and I also defend the department when we're sued. Um, I've been there for ten years, and I currently work there. I also am the tribal affairs liaison there. So, I work in, um, with our twelve tribes, um, ten of which have tax agreements with us. So, I help administer those, and I connect with them on tax issues. Um, so the last twenty years, I've served the citizens of Michigan. And the reason I wanna run for judge is I'd like to bring my public service back home to Kalamazoo. And, um, I think I would be a good, um, staff person for the Kalamazoo County Courts because I have a strong commitment to helping people resolve problems and their disputes. I'm fair, I'm open-minded, I have sound reasoning skills, I'm thoughtful, I have approach problems with common sense and practicality. And I will hope that you would consider voting for me in the August primary. That's August 2nd. And I've already given you my website, but I just wanna thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and, uh, just let you know a little bit about me. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Julie, thank you very much for coming and talking with us.
If I can, too, I, 'cause it was Julie Jensen, the number four.
Correct.
Judge.
Yes.
At Gmail, or...
No, dot com.
Dot com.
The Gmail is my email, so it goes pretty along with that.
Okay. Julie Jensen, number four, judge.com.
Thank you.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, it takes us down to trustees' time. We'll start with Ms. Merrill. Trustee Merrill?
She's, she's done.
Trustee Holmes?
She's just happy that there's trees being planted.
That's what it is.
Christian, I have some comments I'd like to put in the public record if I could. Thank you. Uh, President Frisbee, one of the things I enjoy during council meetings is when we celebrate those who serve and have served the community honorably, those individuals who give more than they take, and those whose services raise the bar for those who follow. And seeing my friend, Mr. Bill Hunt, here today, it, uh, resonates that even more.
Yep.
We all aspire to be you, sir. You've done a tremendous job, and thank you once more. Um, in keeping with comments made earlier tonight, I feel it is appropriate to recognize a lifelong resident in our community whose contributions have impacted thousands of children. In nineteen seventy-four, Evelyn Brockway volunteered to run the weekly bingo for the Vicksburg Athletic Boosters. For the next forty-four years, this weekly bingo game became the primary fundraiser for the boosters, created a community event for all to participate, including seniors, and ultimately resulted in over a million dollars to be raised for kids in the Vicksburg school system. Evelyn's contributions have been acknowledged by others in the community, including the boosters, when they named annual scholarships after her that are given to athletes continuing their education at the college level, and in nineteen ninety by the high school athletic department, when she was inducted into the Athletic Hall of Fame. And in twenty sixteen, when the Vicksburg Community Schools named the high school softball fields the Evelyn Brockway Softball Complex. During the dedication ceremony, then-school superintendent Charles Glace indicated that the monies raised by Evelyn resulted in current high school athlete not having to pay to play a sport. Also, neither would their children. And also, neither would their children. These comments are as impactful today as they were at the dedication six years ago, because most schools in our area require students to pay upwards of hundreds of dollars to play one sport. Imagine if you had a family with two, three, five, do the arithmetic, it's pretty expensive. Her belief that all children should be treated fairly and equally is reflected in a quote on her dedication plaque that hangs on the concession stand wall today. And only in Vicksburg is there a dedication plaque that hangs on a concession wall. And that plaque reads very simply, "Every kid should have an opportunity to play." As a representative of the Vicksburg Village Council, I would like to thank Evelyn for her service to our community and for the impact it will have on the lives of children in the years to come.
Well said, Rick. Thank you. Trustee Olson?
Uh, I had the pleasure to spend a very cold day at St. Joe yesterday, and was able to come through Benton Harbor to see all the construction that's going on over there, especially the highways and the new bridges. They tore out six, or, excuse me, three bridges last year. They're tearing out another two to three this year. So, that's our tax dollars at work. Um, and I ran into a lot of people from Vicksburg and Schoolcraft, and nothing but compliments, uh, the way the village is, the way it's growing, especially Mackenzie's Bakery. Um, and then, just before I came here tonight, I was watching the local news, and Benton Harbor is just like Vicksburg, Schoolcraft, every other small town in America today. We're going through the lead problem with the lead lines and that. Um, Benton Harbor has clamped down. They are gonna get this thing done, and they're bound and determined to do it. Right now, last month, they installed over five hundred new lines to replace the lead lines. At the current rate that they are going, instead of being done July of next year, they're gonna be done November of this year. That's what pure determination gets done, and that's what we need more of. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Denny. Trustee Wagner?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
You want another chance?
No, I've said everything I'm gonna say.
Trustee Reister. President Tim Keller.
Uh, this is gonna lightly touch on, very lightly touch on what Rick just eloquently said. Um, I happened to be on Facebook this weekend, not, I don't spend a lot of time on it, but there were several, several posts and pictures of the Vicksburg Little League Opening Day Parade, and, and it, it hearkened back to when my kids were little, as Rick's were, and, uh, doing the Little League Parade with the kids in the back of the pickup truck. And, and, and this morning, I drove through town, and it reminded me of all the broken candy on the, on the, on the street. I went, yep, there was a parade through here. But it just, you know, it, it was great, because even though the weather hasn't been very conducive, um, spring is here, and, and, you know, every kid's a, every kid's a, I'm gonna date myself, but I, well, we'll say, we'll say, uh, Mi, you know, Miggy Cabrera, but, you know, or gonna be a, uh, Justin Verlander, you know, every kid can dream. So, it was kinda cool to see that on Facebook, and there were all positive comments about how great the parade was. So, thank you.
All right. Yeah, I don't, I don't have much to say, other than I, I acknowledge and thank this team in front of us for their professionalism and your contribution to this community. Uh, Denise Harold, Bobby Durkey, phenomenal people to have worked with. We're gonna miss them. And Lori Reasoner and, uh, Don Denzmore, welcome to the team. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Holmes.
Motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, meeting adjourned.